We got a busy work session, so we're going to jump right in. Number one on the agenda is the Alabama Historic Commission Certified Local Government Program.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm Paige Thomas with the Alabama Historical Commission. I am the Certified Local Government Coordinator for the State of Alabama. The Alabama Historical Commission is the State Historic Preservation Office. We kind of have two kind of legs of the commission where we have about 13 different historic sites that are operated, then also the historic preservation side where we have different offices that help out with things like state tax credits. The Certified Local Government Program that I help coordinate is a partnership between the National Park Service and our office and local governments. So any local government that has enacted a historic preservation ordinance persuade the state of enabling legislation can, after they've established a historic preservation commission, can apply to become a certified local government. I'm going to touch briefly on this program, and then I want to talk more about historic preservation commissions. Some of the benefits of the Certified Local Government Program are technical assistance, just networking opportunities with other cities of similar sizes across from other states. Probably one of the biggest benefits of the Certified Local Government Program is that those cities have access to a competitive grant program. So to apply for competitive grant funding, they can get up to about $24,000 worth of grant funds. It's a matching grant program, so the federal money is worth about 60%. The 40% has to either be monetary from the CLG. It can also be in matching funds, so it can be donated volunteer hours, things like that. So there are ways that you can spend less money towards that grant by utilizing those ways. But having a historic preservation commission, establishing that is the first thing that has to occur. Historic Preservation Commission, we actually have right now 34 certified local governments. Baldwin County, their Historic Preservation Commission is in the process of looking at becoming a certified local government. We've also had several local governments that have been in partnership for years but that have kind of not been very active, recently reactivating. One of those that's similar in size to Fairhope is the city of Bussumer. They've been a CLG for a while, but within a former administration, it kind of slowed down. Now they're looking at resur surveying their downtown historic districts so that they can utilize that information in their comprehensive plan and master plan that they're working on. And resur surveying areas, historic areas, things like that, getting context, that's one of the things, project wise, that is eligible for those certified local government grant funds. Another thing is, that's been really popular recently, is walking tours of historic districts. And I always say that's a great one for cities because you can't necessarily highlight a business, but you can highlight those buildings and it'll get tourism and foot traffic over those areas. I don't think Fairhope really has a problem with foot traffic right now. I was just downtown earlier, it looked like spring break had arrived, especially when I was driving down 65 today, too, and honking, wanted to honk a horn a time or two at some out-of-state tags. But we do love them down here, don't we?
We do.
Because they do bring in, you know, besides tax dollars, they bring in a lot of spirit and flavors. And I actually met a lady that had a mini long-haired dachshund, and so I got to meet Trudy today. She's really cute, if you see her walking around. So happy to have those people. But Historic Preservation Commission, it is made up of seven people that are appointed by the mayor, but then it is approved by city council. So city council is the one that passes the resolution to enact a historic preservation ordinance. They are also the one to approve the mayor's nominees. Those seven members have to have, either live in a actual historic district, or they have to have the expertise that's written out in the ordinance. Some of this includes architecture, archaeology, members that have had planning backgrounds. There's kind of a different gambit of careers that one can be, or professional, that one can be in. There's several different duties of the Historic Preservation Commission. One of them is to help steer the city, kind of be a liaison for historic matters, to help identify those places that are important locally, that have significance, maybe not even just locally, but statewide and nationally. And to help kind of come up with a plan to protect those buildings, or either just to get, you know, recognition for those buildings, to notify that they're historic in nature. One common misconception that we come across in historic preservation commissions is that you have to have a locally regulated district. So if someone's in a historic district that's already on the national register, they have to get approval for work being done from a historic preservation commission. And that's not how that works. You can have a historic preservation commission and not have local design review. Local design review is something we encourage because it's the best way to protect the historic building stock that you have, but it's not something that you have to do. It's an optional component. That is something that is within the bounds of the duties and powers that's in a typical ordinance for a historic preservation commission. That's kind of the high, I'm sure you all have questions for me. So I just would really encourage the city of Fairhope to enact a historic preservation ordinance and to establish that actual commission. I know you all have a committee right now that helps out with stuff, especially because there is so much change happening. It seems like right now in Fairhope, it's happening really fast. And it would probably be good to have a commission in place so that in the future, if some of these powers and duties that you don't exercise right now, you might want to exercise, it's already in place. And just so you know, too, any kind of local regulation, it involves a public process. And that's something, too, that council would have to pass in ordinance, a resolution to have a locally regulated district after the public has been involved. And 50% or more of those property owners have been in favor of having a local district. So I'm going to let you all ask me questions. You may also have questions about, like, what a historic building is, how do we get there, that kind of thing. So I'll just kind of leave it up to you all to steer what we talk about.
Counsel, I'll open the questions up to everybody.
Yeah, so you kind of posed the question yourself, you know, what do you typically consider the age of a building to be? In a typical Alabama city, what would you say the age needs to be?
It may surprise you. The standard kind of across the board is around 50 years of age or more. That standard is set by the National Park Service because they have their own historic register, which is what people usually recognize, the National Register of Historic Places, that lists properties that are at least, least 50 years of age. It also has to have a level of integrity and also a level of significance. So for the national register, that building has to be 50 years of age. We also, at the state, have our own state register program, the Alabama Register of Landmarks Inheritage. It's very similar to the national register program in the sense that a site, an object, an individual property, or a district can be listed to that register, just like the national register. And it looks at similar things, age, significance, and integrity. The difference, though, is the Alabama Register of Property only has to be 40 years of age or older to be listed to the Alabama Register. Other ways that something can be, like, officially known as historic is if a property goes through the Section 106 process, that's an environmental review. That is usually triggered when some kind of federal funds are used in close proximity to a historic district. And so that requires a federal agency to go through and work with the state preservation office and evaluate a property to see if it could be eligible for listing in the national register, and if it already is listed, if any adverse effects of the project they're proposing are happening. So for example, let's say the Aldight came through and they were trying to widen a road, you know, we're close to the beaches, widen a road for some beach access. And in close proximity, there's an old house, and it's an old farm, you know, land. So the federal agency would have to go through that 106 process to assess what widening that road would do to that property, if it would impact the structure, if it would impact any kind of archaeological find that may be on the land, anything like that. So during that process, it's assessed if a property is historic or not. Now, they use similar standards to the National Park Service, again, that 50 years of age, significance, integrity with that. Other ways, you know, the city of Fairhope could set up some standards. We usually say use the Secretary of Interior standards, but maybe you all are working on a, you know, planning comprehensive plan or something, and you all kind of have in there some language that sets your own parameters for historic properties, that something could, like, you know, definitively defined. But other than that, those are kind of the ways to really actually define a property to be an historic. Of course, you know, there's a lot of properties that aren't listed the national register yet, or even the Alabama Register, that are historic, they just haven't been officially evaluated.
Let me ask you a quick question about integrity of a structure. And I think that that's one thing that worries people here locally is, you know, I think that significance, you know, it can be a matter of opinion, and that also concerns me, that some people may say, well, this is significant, it's not. Now, I can let a panel of experts maybe decide that, but when you get to integrity, I think that a lot of people worry it, that they have a little resistance to that because some might say, well, that building's been here for 75 years, but let's just take a worst case. Let's say termites have eaten a building down to nothing but a few two-by-fours. And then, you know, I think people worry, they hear the word historical preservation, and they worry, is this district going to cause me to have to preserve these three pieces of wood and build it back to what it was prior? Because I could give you examples in Fairhope where it's been done, and it's fantastic, but I could also give you an example, and that's the building where another broken egg is, that building burned down, unfortunately, but it wasn't really anything special. And it's a lot of history, it was significant, but that, and people may disagree with me, but it just typically, it wasn't that, there wasn't any integrity left to the building in it, but what was put there is, I think, a fine piece of architecture, and people like it. And I've never had one person ever say, we should have made them build that back like it was before, because that's the new structure that could be preserved. You know, in 50 years, that's going to be the history, and I think it's probably a little better than the prior history, if I may be frank. And I know people watching this are going to hang me out to dry for that, but this is my own opinion on that.
I'm glad you said that, because I have something to say, too. So integrity in the sense of, like, a historic building, it's not looking at condition, if that makes sense. So something could, if it's to the point that it's absolutely fallen in, it's too gone to, you know, obviously, there's threshold, there's reasoning there, you know. But the thing about integrity that's not just an aesthetic thing, is things you can look at are, like, the location, you know, the setting. Obviously, the design is something that could be significant, or the materials, or the craftsmanship. You know, some older houses have, you know, their tongue and groove, or their dovetails in there. And there's also, like, feeling, like you were saying, like, the building before wasn't a really a great building, but it did have this feeling, and it did have the significance to it. Also association by, you know, a person or something, or some kind of event. If you are listed on the national register or the Alabama register, and your building is officially deemed historic, it is honorific. So it does not, we do not come back as the Alabama Historical Commission or the state ship out and say, oh, I'm sorry, you've got to build your building back to what it was, because it's an honorific listing. Now, there are kind of different programs that would require you to go back to that standard, if something is there to replace it as it is. And that would be if someone uses historic tax credits. There's tax credit benefit programs, the rehabilitative tax credits that both the federal office has and the state office has. And because federal funds are tied to those, and state funds, if someone's working on a project, they would have to go back, say there were wood windows there, they would probably have to go back with wood windows to match. Kind of the approach to that is first, try to repair what you have, and if you can't, replace to match. And if you can't do that, then submit your materials, and there's a review and stuff like that. Both programs have been really successful. The state one's been very successful, and we hope that they continue to renew it. I think right now it's out to 2027, and we would love if we had more funds coming that way, so more people could benefit from that. The tax credit program is an income, it is for income-producing properties, so currently we don't have anything for private individual, private property holders. But it, so the only reason that there would, someone would technically tell you to do that with your property is through Section 106 review, if they find it's historic and there's some kind of mitigation that needs to happen, if it's a tax credit project because it's using federal funds. And the last way is if there's local design review. And that would be something that city council would have to pass. And again, that's a very public process, it's not something that's just like, oh, we're going to mark this area, and we're going to do it. The property has to be surveyed recently in the area. A lot of times, people use national register boundaries, you don't have to use those, though. You can do boundaries that are significant, but it does, it can't just be a, let's just, you know, circle this area. There does have to be some parameters, involve some context in that survey work and stuff like that, because you want it to be a fair process, obviously. But also with that local designation, the city, in conjunction with their Historic Preservation Commission and the public, form the guidelines. The only real requirement of those guidelines are that anything you are trying to provide guidance or parameters on work have to meet the Secretary of Interior standards. Now with that, only the exterior is reviewed. So if someone's coming, you know, and saying, hey, I'm in this local district, but I don't want to purchase this house because they're going to make me do the inside and outside how they want it. Nope, that's not, not the case. It's just the outside. And it's also what kind of the public input, if you just want to review demolitions and new constructions and have parameters for those new constructions as far as, like, orientation, design of the building, you're not looking at necessarily the aesthetics, but they would be looking at things like the massing of the building, is it similar massing of what's around it? Scale of the building, same thing, kind of the size-wise, even if it's just, you know, you don't want two, two-story buildings next to each other, but one is really like a four-story building because they decided to have their ceiling so high. Also kind of rhythm and repetition, being kind of patterns, like with fenestration, like your windows and your doors. Those are things that you can look at for new construction that not, that are not necessarily straight, you know, design aesthetics. Historic Preservation Commissions, they get a bad rap for being the pretty committee, but that's not what they are, because preservation is more than just trying to save something pretty. It also could be saving something that has, you know, cultural value. So that is kind of the point of why these local regulations try not to get in too much of the weed of things. And you can have more, what I was describing is, like, just demolition and new construction. It's kind of been referred to sometimes as a conservation district, not necessarily a historic district that has a lot of guidelines, but it's the same process, it's a public process. You're getting information from the public of, you know, their concerns on the draft of the guidelines and their input, and they also have a vote, to whether, each property owner gets a vote of whether or not they want to be under those regulations or not. So that is the only time that someone would say, hey, this is, if someone's pulling a permit and there's local regulation, you know, say, hey, this is going on. Another issue that can come up is building codes versus old houses. And this is not under local regulation, this is just issues that, you know, come up from time to time. Usually, I think, and if anyone's here, I think the building inspector's here, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of cities use the International Building Code. Okay, so in the International Building Code, there are some provisions for historic buildings, so there are some allowances. Now, the interpretation of that, sometimes, like, a lot of codes can get a little gray area, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
Yeah. And so sometimes it takes kind of creative minds to come together and say, okay, you need to rewire this house because you're taking out so much of this, but, you know, you, as the owner, would really love to keep the plaster walls, but you got to take it out so you can rewire. Well, there's ways to get crafty around that. You can drop wire in. Or there's other ways, like, say if you have a railing issue. Railing heights is a big thing that seems to go, someone that kind of is going down the street and wouldn't notice, wouldn't notice, but in the way of historic buildings, it's really a way to identify kind of like time period and style. So there's ways to get, you know, around having a railing that's really low, and you need to replace all of it, but it's historic, so you don't want to come up to, I think it's like 36 inches, if it's so far off the ground. Well, you know, I use this example a lot, but if you go to New Orleans, which I'm sure a lot of people, because we're close, have been, on, in the Pucray or in the French Quarter, there's the galleries that everybody walks out to. I still don't know how they're safe, you might agree with me. I have no idea how they get around this sometimes. But the cast iron and sometimes actual wrought iron that were handmade railings on those balconies and galleries are lower than 36 inches. But what you'll see is, they have added to them a piece that kind of comes inward, that's just a rail to kind of keep that safety height, and it impacts the street less. So like, if you're on the street on the bottom, you're probably not going to see that. So there's creative ways of getting compromises to make sure a building can be in use, also financially, you know, better than having to redo everything if you have to replace 50%, or 50% or more of that railing. So that's just an issue that sometimes comes up, is people are like, oh, they're going to make me do all this. But there's, you know, a lot of it is communication between the city, building inspectors, homeowner, the homeowner has a contractor, the contractor. So there's kind of ways to be creative for that kind of stuff.
Let me ask, so obviously, step one would be establishing a historic preservation commission, and then step two would be defining the parameters of the district to which that historic preservation would be committed to, is that correct?
Well, technically, the commission is for all the jurisdiction of the city. So again, they don't have, if you wanted local regulation for a specific district, that's when you would go through and pass the legislation and all that for, and have the guidelines, have the public input. City council would have to pass the ordinance making the local guidelines.
But if we enact, if we establish a commission, then they would be, anything within the city limits would be under their purview?
Not necessarily their purview, because if they don't have a local district, there's not really anything for them to have a quasi judicial board about, if that makes sense. But if you all decided to designate a specific property as, like, a landmark property, that would need approval by the commission, or the commission can help you identify other individual landmarks or properties that haven't been listed yet to the national register, that's something that they can work on. Or if you all do want to look into doing some kind of local design review, like a conservation district, the commission can be involved in that process and kind of spearhead and help with the public outreach during that process. Well, first, they would have to pass another ordinance. So it would require a little bit more public input.
Yeah, yeah, yes, that's kind of what I'm not, I'm not understanding, is that, so let's just say that we, tonight, said, okay, let's enact, let's put in place a historic preservation commission, and that's all we did. Would anything change at all?
Not right now, no.
Okay.
It would, they would serve as kind of a liaison, like, to preservation.
Kind of like the preservation committee does now.
Yes, kind of like they're doing right now.
So what would we then have to do to make it matter in any way different than what we currently have?
Well, and it would also give the commission, they would also have other powers and duties that they could do, and I can, I have you all a copy of that ordinance, if you all want to look into it. So it would give the commission some broader powers and availability as far as kind of like spearheading projects, or trying to, you know, save buildings, things like that. But as far as having purview over a jurisdiction or an area, that would not happen until you go through the public process again, have draft guidelines, or at least have an idea of what you all are looking at for that district, and get the public input, and then also get a vote from the property owners.
All right. And then going back to the, in kind of deciding integrity or significance, would that be decided by the commission? And so first question, is that something that would be decided by our commission?
I always suggest, and what people use, is the National Register of Historic Places standards.
Okay.
So it's something that if you all want to tweak that a little bit, like the age or something, that's something that the commission can say, hey, we're kind of getting public input, this is what we're interested in, to you as the council. But it is up to you all to say, hey, we.
Follow this standard?
Yeah, we want to follow this standard. You all are the one that passes the ordinance.
And is that criteria from the national register, is that an objective standard, or is that subjective?
It's subjective. It is something that is set by the National Park Service, that is how they evaluate. This is, National Historic Preservation Act was passed in 1966. In the 80s, they amended it for the CLG program and some other things, but it's the one that really kind of set the parameters in place to make it objective.
Okay.
And that's why, too, like, with the passing the ordinance for the commission, you know, you do have those professional standards that are in place and qualifications that you do have to meet. So it is trying to make it more of an objective and kind of, best word's not coming to me right now, but not just, we want to appoint this person, let's get this person on the committee, but they do actual, have to have some qualifications. So it's not just a, you know, well, let me just put that person on there, kind of thing.
And I'm kind of thinking through some of the things that Jack said, because that's when you, there aren't, at least in my experience, there aren't many people that are lukewarm about historic preservation. You either love it, or you think it's a restriction, and you don't want anything to do with it. And I think the nays are people that, you know, that feel like if I need, I want to build something new and pretty, like the building Jack talked about, that you might run into some trouble by saying, no, no, we need you to make it look like it did in 1971 when it was built, because that was a 50-year-old building, and it's historic. Whether it's historic or just old, that's a different, you know, debate. That's why I was asking about objective versus subjective.
Right.
And then, or, you buy, you know, a house and you want to tear it down, if it's in this historic area, it's a 1967 ranch house that has no significance to anybody, but there might be a group that says, that was the sweetest third-grade teacher to ever teach at Fairhope Elementary, he lived there for a year and eight months from 1964 to 1966, and by gosh, we need to preserve that. And so where is the middle ground on that to protect from things like that happening, I guess, is what, I guess I'm asking.
So, I mean, it's the standards, essentially, that the Secretary of Interior has in place through the park service. So it also, not just the standards for listing to a national register property, but there's standards for rehabilitation that are widely used, and in that, it's kind of the best approach, and that's what guidelines are typically based off of. Just like with the International Building Code, some areas are kind of gray. So you do have a little bit to say, how can we make this fit our city best? How can we make this work for our constituents the best while still maintaining our sense of place here in Fairhope? Because a lot of that has gone away, you know? I mean, it has. I've set my family's from here, grew up going to Mullet Point, you know, so excited, I've only seen one Jubilee when I was a little girl, and would really love to get back. But it's a lot different than the Fairhope I came and visited. Now, the lights are still on the trees, which I love, I remember that, but, you know, it has changed a lot. So, you know, trying to make sure, because there is so much growth happening, that that quality of Fairhope that everyone who wanted to get down here originally, you know, and move down here and come down here, not just to escape the heat in Mobile in the summer times, but, you know, make it a place that still feels like Fairhope. So there are the standards that can help shape that. And interestingly enough, one of the things that says in there is trying not to recreate the past. So when people say someone wants to do an addition to their house, and it's wood on the current house, or they want to do a garage, you know, it would be kind of ridiculous to say to someone, well, you got to get that wood that is just like that. But hey, this is separate structure, you know, or they're doing a little addition, there's like a hyphen in between. You want it to kind of, the old and new to be differentiated. So that's one of the things that it says in the standards. Like, yes, if it's already there, you want to try to repair, you want to replace it to match better in things, but if something is completely, you know, gone, you don't want, like, you wouldn't want to build a whole new building to try to make it look like the past, and someone in 100 years come up and say, oh, well, this looks like it might have been here forever. You know, you want to make sure that it's, your story is being told, whether that means that things, there was a rapid, you know, growth in population, so there was a lot of changes that happened, but you can tell the newer buildings from the older buildings, not just by their style, if they look the same, but by material. So there is a big thing about trying not to recreate something, but to make sure that it's distinguishable.
Counsel, any other questions at this point?
I guess my one question I had is, if you do form the Historic Preservation Commission, you get certified local government status, but if you don't take the next step to create the local design review, what would be the primary function of the Historic Preservation Commission?
So they can help kind of serve as a liaison for the city on things.
Just what they're doing now.
They can help with public outreach.
Be eligible for obtaining grant funds.
Yes, they can, and that's one of the powers and duties that's listed through there, is they can help get grant funds. And that can be, again, resur surveying areas, if you If you have a building that y'all own that's historic, and y'all need to do like a historic structures report on it, that's something that, the cost of that can be offset by these CLG grant funds. But if you don't have the Historic Preservation Commission, you, you can't get access to those funds and, and do the CLG.
You don't have to do the design review. You do not have to do the design review.
Right, that's, that's what I'm just saying, was kind of, if you don't do that, then what, what are the powers and function?
And I think one of the other important things, not just that National Register listing of trying to get more properties noted, because as you kind of mentioned with the ranch housing, right now, nineteen seventy-three is fifty years ago. So there are a lot of mid-century buildings that are, you know, getting listed in neighborhoods. There is one currently in Huntsville that was associated with NASA, and it's getting listed right now, and it is mainly all ranch houses. So those things, you know, things do happen fast and, and change, especially because this period of technology that started getting more rapid, you know? So I think it is important that kind of having a commission that has the qualifications that can help you recognize, and not just identify, hey, we might want to, you know, look into something about this building or this structure, but also they can help identify Alabama Register districts. If something can't be listed to the National Register, or something's changed to, you know, or doesn't meet that fifty years, but you, you want kind of recognition for this area because, you know, some of those properties really do have some kind of significance, it's great to have that recognition and listed to the Alabama Register and kind of keep things, keep things moving and keep identifying things that get it recognition, so that if someone does come and purchase a property, at least you can say, hey, this is listed as Alabama Register. This has been officially listed as historic, and this is kind of the value you have in your property that's not monetary, but cultural value and things like that.
Mr. Cortez, one more quick question.
Please.
If you can answer this quickly, is, so if you were to have some ordinances pertaining to a district, or whatever that may look like, and you mentioned several different ways that could look, how do you enforce those, how do you enforce that ordinance? If somebody violates that ordinance, what does that, what does that typically look like?
So there is spelled out in the state enabling legislation. There are ways that you can, someone could go to environmental court, technically, court, circuit, excuse me, circuit court maybe. There can be, let me start over. It's really up to the administration and council how you want to go about that. Obviously, there needs to be some kind of, you know, this is, this is what happens. A lot of times what will happen is, someone does work on their property that's in a locally regulated historic district, and they did not pull a certificate of appropriateness, which is kind of like the historic permit, let's say. A lot of times, they probably didn't pull an actual permit, because typically, to do any kind of work, if you're in a historic district, or doing outside stuff, you're trying to get a permit for it, your permitting office is going to say, hey, have y'all gone through the process to get a certificate of appropriateness? Through that process, there may be someone designated with the city, like a specific city planner, that can expedite some of those things. So say someone is coming in, they're in a historic district, let's say, part of the local regulations for that historic, say, any kind of material change on the outside, you know, you've got to get the C of A for. Well, this person is changing the material, but they're going back to match it the same. So at that point, that staff member that's dedicated for expedited review can look at it, issue the C of A, that person can go on their way and get their permit, and there shouldn't be an issue. A lot of times what happens is people bypass that process, and they decide, you know what, I'm not going to get the permit anyways. So usually how people get caught is they get, like, someone, a building inspector goes out, they see that work's being done, they issue a stop work order, or whoever the designated preservation person, staff person is to the commission for the city, they might issue a stop work order. Now, someone after that can go in and say, hey, this is the work I'm doing, I need to get the C of A so I can get my permit. They may have to go before the commission to get approval if it's a larger project. Again, if it's something expedited, staff can say, you know what, you didn't get your permit, but you're doing all the work according to the guidelines, I can expedite this, go to your permit. Now, if someone goes in front of the commission for a project, then they just start doing what they want to do without the approval. One, not only is it violating the Historic Preservation Commission, but it's probably violating their building permit anyways. So they're going to kind of have two issues on their hand. In that case, if they want to make an appeal to what the Historic Preservation said they could do, they can appeal to circuit court, and it's up to the city, but you could, you can enforce fines if you wanted to. If they don't remedy the situation, and it doesn't have to be a large fine, you can do a small fine, you can do fines depending on too, like, if it's, they demolished something without a permit, you can find them, you know, you can decide that fee, that's up to y'all. But that is within the state enabling legislation, is something that y'all can do as a city. So it kind of is up to y'all. But there's always, you know, you always want something to let people know, we're serious about this process, but it doesn't, it's not spelled out in the state enabling legislation exactly what you have to do. So that's kind of in y'all's power.
Counsel, anything else? Thank you for your time.
All right, thank y'all. Y'all have a good evening.
You too.
All right. Item number two on our agenda is the project status and budget update for the roundabout at North Section Street.
Good afternoon, counsel. How are y'all doing?
Good, good, thank you.
Just kind of wanted to give you an update and report, and you kind of have an at-a-glance, as well as in your packet, you have the, the current engineer's estimate, as well as the plan set for the MPO-funded roundabout that is proposed for North Section Street at Triangle, Veterans, and Scenic ninety-eight intersection. And just so you know, is, is this project is managed or reviewed through the ALDOT process, so they require thirty, a sixty, and then the next step, which I'll go into in a minute. But we are at the sixty percent phase, which means we do get a preliminary estimate of probable cost. At this point in time, the engineer's estimate is one million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty-four cents. To kind of recap, circa twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the MPO decided to add this project to their list, and eventually funded it in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year cycle. That funding was first set at one point two million dollars, which would be, the eighty-twenty split would be nine hundred and sixty would be from MPO funds, and two hundred and forty would be the city match. They are in the process realizing that things have changed, and there is a consideration that before this goes to bid, that they would add an additional three seventy-five, which would make that split three hundred and seven, three hundred from the MPO and seventy-five thousand from us, which gives us a total project funding of one million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, with the division of cost share being one million, two hundred and sixty thousand to the MPO, and three hundred and fifteen thousand on the city. If you look at the current estimate versus what the funding, that's a difference of seventy-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty-four cents. So if all things remain the same, which I'm never optimistic they will, I hope they will go improve in our favor, but usually it tends to go the other direction. But at this point in time, if we were to let this project and these numbers were to hold true, we would have to additionally find that seventy-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty-four cents to add to the three fifteen that we are already obligated at twenty percent to, to make that project go forward. So that would bring our city share to three hundred and ninety-two thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty-four cents. What happens next? Well, the engineer is moving toward what we call the ninety percent plan set, and that is the one that goes through PS and E review with ALDOT. That stands for Plan, Specifications, and Estimates. That, they will then either concur with all the plans and the specifications, as well as the estimates, and then there will be an adjusted, or corrected, or an accepted final budget estimate of probable cost. I will make sure when we get to that point to report back to you. Hopefully, there won't be any significant change. And at that point in time is when we would complete the plan sets, and ALDOT would give us the authorization to go to bid. We are probably about thirty days from being close to asking for the PS and E review, and then figure another thirty days for them to actually start that review. And usually, it could be another thirty days in there before we get any comments back, and, and it's actually a sit-down in a room where there's about twelve people staring at you telling you to change this, correct that, add this, and that kind of thing. So we're hopefully looking at sometime getting this project prepared for bid and letting, probably at sometime in the fall of the year. And again, that will give us the opportunity in the budget process to plan for and, and budget for any additional funds that aren't already planned for. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I just kind of wanted to keep y'all in the loop of where we were on this project.
So you're saying bid it or build it in the fall?
Bid.
Bid it in the fall.
And construction, you know, I don't know if Volker has provided an estimate there, but I, I think you're probably going to look at a, at least probably two hundred and seventy working days, nine months, hopefully a little shorter than that. I know one of the considerations is that how can we keep the intersection as open as possible during construction? The one challenge, which is if there was one leg that you could drop off, would probably be veterans that would hurt you the least, but the triangle drive is the one that has the greatest challenge in matching grades coming into the new roundabout, and that's probably the leg that's going to have the most closure associated with it. But for the vast majority of the project, our goal is to keep section, scenic, and veterans open during construction, and really only would close those when they're actually tying in the actual roundabout to it, so. And that's just going to be tough. You know, I, I don't think we have the luxury here that the county tends to take, and they just shut the whole thing down and, and do that. That's just such an important intersection for us.
Counsel, any other questions?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I had, the, I have a request to have an unbudgeted hire now for another building inspector, and there's a few reasons for it. One, we have one that's going to be out probably long-term with some issues right now, so that puts us with three people in the field full-time, plus me, kind of backing up and grabbing stuff as I can. If you look at the numbers we did, and we ran the numbers from October to the end of January, and so far, we've done seven hundred and forty-nine permits in that four-month span, which is about a hundred and eighty-eight a month. And one of the issues we run into is we have to review each of those for, you know, Hunter's team looks at it for zoning, we look at it for building code, we look at it for code compliance. And being short a field inspector, getting permits out in a timely manner is becoming an issue. We've got, the guys are working overtime, you know, all of us in the department trying to keep up with it. And just looking at the workload, you know, they're running a, you know, thirty-plus inspections on an average day. We've had some, you know, forty-plus, we've had some others that are twenty. But we've already, as of the end of January, we've already collected seventy-five percent of our projected budget for the year in the first four months. And we still have some very big projects on the horizon, and now we are starting to get inspections for the reserve. They're calling in like a floor at a time, which are ten units, and that's taking three guys a half a day each out there, and that's not including everything else we have. So, you know, in terms of what we have that has either been approved or is in-house for approval, we've probably got enough to keep us going at this pace for probably another eighteen to twenty-four months, if not, and that's not including anything else that may come, come in the door, you know, here in the last three months. So we have new subdivisions coming online. I have another apartment complex up on one oh four that I am in the middle of reviewing. That permit should be ready to issue within the next thirty to sixty days. We have, I've never seen this much commercial work going on here in the fifteen years that I've been affiliated with the city. It's just a tremendous amount of commercial work. So we are requesting that you allow us to advertise and bring in another inspector to help us while, number one, we're shorthanded, and number two, have the kind of workload that we have going on right now.
Counsel, any questions for Eric?
I support adding somebody if we've got an eighteen to twenty-four month backlog of inspections to be done. And I, I know, I hear from people sometimes it's tough to get an inspection, turn around to Fairhope, and I know you guys are working hard and doing the best you can, so I'm certainly in favor of that. Y'all make money.
Try to.
I was trying to find that here in the financials, but.
Sure.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
I, I want to just echo what, what Councilman Conyers said, and said I would support that. Eric, I've always found you to be reasonable, logical, when you come up here and request, you know, I don't see it as wanting more than what you absolutely need, so I appreciate that. Cheated a little bit, we had a conversation earlier today, so, you know, you did a good job explaining that too, so.
I appreciate your kind words. Thank you very much.
Well, wanted to know, I saw it on the agenda, wanted to know a little bit more. I do want to ask you a question while you're up here, though.
Sure.
Speaking of historical preservation, and, you know, there seems like there may be a little bit more involved for, you know, maybe your department and maybe even other departments.
Sure.
When you were listening to that, did you think that there might be additional fees associated with inspecting some of that, or, you know, because if, you know, there's one thing to match code, but then if you have something that's, you're not used to seeing every day, you know, it may be a subset of the IBC, or it may be, well, we agreed to allow this renovation, but they have to have wooden windows as opposed to aluminum-clad windows. It's just a little more, a few more things for your staff to look for. I kind of felt like that may impact you a little bit.
Yeah, it can. We've done, you know, when the Grand Hotel did their massive renovation three, four years ago, that's about as historic a building as you're going to find. When they pulled up that soap floor, they had wood timbers dating back to like eighteen forty-five, and you wouldn't believe all the debris and all of the things that were down up under that floor. So we dealt with them a lot. They actually had an architect that specialized in historic that was affiliated with that project, and we worked with them. Fee-wise, it would probably, unless the council decides to add additional fees, it would fall under the building permit fees. It's just part, right now, Hunter's team looks at the zoning, we look at the building code compliance, I don't necessarily see why we would need to add fees to that. It would be a different, another level of looking at things. But, you know.
If they don't pull a permit?
Yes. Well, if that, yes, well, and if they don't pull a permit, our, our ordinance states that we are to double the permit fee, which we do, and, and that happens a lot. You know, and beyond that, if we've got somebody that just refuses to comply, we can assess an additional five hundred dollar fine and/or take them in front of the city judge. So there are, there are fines associated with working without permits. Now, we try to work with folks. We tend to give homeowner builders some benefit of the doubt, you know, we don't want to come out fining them right off the bat, but those are things that we would handle just in the normal course of issuing permits, reviewing permits. We would just need to know what those guidelines are. You know, what, what do we want to look at? What do we want to enforce? Oh, sure.
I was going to add to it, I didn't know the protocol, though. Typically, if you have local design review, what happens is, like, any kind of expedited review, there's a small fee, and it's just to kind of cover administrative costs. And then for those certificate of appropriateness that are larger reviews required by the Historic Preservation Commission, that can have a larger fee to it. I know, like, the one city has like a five-dollar fee for the expedited, like, reviews, and it's like thirty dollars for the certificate of appropriateness. It's really just covering administrative costs. But because their plans that they send to the building permit office and everything will have those notes on there of what building materials and stuff, the inspectors are going to be looking just, just to see what materials. So if the material is like a historic material, it's not that they're necessarily doing more work, it's just they're, you know, reviewing something different.
Sure. And that's not on you, because like, right now, what we do, if we have a building that actually has a shield and banner on it, county or, or otherwise, since we don't have an ordinance, we can't stop them from tearing it down, but in the review comments, I will send them on every review, please, and I'll give them a link, we have a section on the building department page for historic structures in Fairhope. And it lists the Schneider reports from twenty fifteen, not only the maps of Bayfront White and downtown districts are on there, there's an accompanying report that has a write-up on each individual building that's either listed as contributing or non-contributing. So when we get a demo permit, that's one of the first things, is we take a look at the map, is it in any of these districts? Is it contributing? So then we will send that information to the applicant, and send them information about possible grants or things they can do if they choose to try to. possible grants or things they can do if they choose to try to preserve that building. So, we try to get the information out there within the regulations that we currently have.
Counsel, anything else? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four is discussion of additional police space.
Hello, how are ya?
Good.
So, most of you know that we've kinda, we've been looking for another location to kind of expand the police, well, to expand the police department. We've outgrown our building and we, and the location, we're kinda locked in, especially during special events. So, we found a location, it's at 329 South Reno. It was the old Emperor Clock Building, I think it was last occupied by a church. I've been able to meet with several of you and kinda show you that location, just to kinda get your thoughts on it. It's about 7,000 square feet that we're looking at. And basically, what we wanna do is use it for our patrol division, to be able to operate out of there. Still, actually, we'll still be working out of the one downtown, but put our patrol division to kind of have a secondary location to get in and out, answer calls, and then use it for training. That is a big part of what we've been trying to do. We bought the Bertra last year, and it takes up a lot of space. So, this would actually get, provide us with more, more space for us to use that on a regular basis.
You said it's 7,000 square feet?
It is, it's an 11,000-square-foot building altogether, but we only want 7,000 square feet.
How would us sharing a building with a non-city or non-police group be handled with safety and security and that kinda thing?
We've actually gone through that. I've talked to Jeff with our IT, and we can, we've got several walls that we are going to put in this building to where no one has access to our side of the building, and then we would have access to theirs, but no one would be able to get in to our, so the security is not a problem.
Okay. How much, how much is the rent for this building?
I think it's 7,000.
7,000 for 7,000 square feet?
Mm-hmm.
Per 7,000 a month.
A month.
Okay. And how much, you talked about building walls, what kinda build-out would we be looking at? Have we got any kinda estimate on that?
It's gonna be very minimal. I mean, we just have, it already has the offices that we need on the front side of the building, so it's gonna be very minimal of what we have to, what we'll actually have to do.
Too hot.
Yeah, it's just too hot. And that would be the part that would shut it off from the rest of the location.
And how long-term of a lease would it?
That I don't, was it three? Okay.
Because I think you won't pull out that green carpet.
He was, he was.
It's actually hard to replace that.
Okay.
Get Jimmy on our interior design committee next.
I don't know much, but I knew when I walked in there that I needed some update.
Yep, it already has a vault in it.
Okay. And so this is in, as a replacement to the space that we were originally talking about building close to Walmart at some point, is that?
And as far as I know, Walmart is still on the table, we're just, I don't know where we're at in terms of.
I got a update from Chris Williams on Friday, and he said that Walmart's pretty much gone silent. They've changed attorneys like four or five times. He's still reaching out to them monthly, pretty much, just to ask what the status is, but so far we don't have any definite answers from them. I think we still would wanna look for property just in case.
So, it may be.
It's like a bridge to gap.
Right, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, 'cause this is a temporary space, three-year space to maybe get us to a more permanent secondary location?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. I'd like to see a budget made, you know, furniture, utilities, I guess the city probably already provides all you two. Okay, Kim, you already have it?
Police Department has already put a budget together on, you know, what they need for office, cameras, so we have a list.
We have a list, yeah, we already have a list.
She can send us. Just the point I wanna be able to add is, we do have money sitting in our impact fees for future growth, and that's what the money is used for. If y'all select, you could choose to at least pay the rent out of that, there's a half a million dollars has been building up, and that was for a future building to be built. So, I mean, that would be, if y'all wanted to select, to say you wanted the rent to be budgeted out of that fund, and the normal operations could come out of the general fund as part of the operations, that's, I mean, that's up to you, or if you want the whole, what's, but what's needed to get this building up and running for them, we could pull all of it out of that fund. It's just that you, I would think in three years, when this lease runs out, you still would wanna figure out a permanent site or something different. So.
If you could get that, those budget numbers to us, I mean, it doesn't sound bad, but at the same time, you know, we're not building any equity in this place.
We've been kind of on the lookout for property just in case something doesn't happen with Walmart, and we just haven't been able to find it. And when we do find something on 98, it's just, it's expensive, as you know. So, this would be a good gap until we can either find a permanent home, or we can really find out what Walmart's gonna do.
Or, you know, might come to the realization that it's not a bad cost, I mean, as opposed to building a multi-million dollar, you know, facility.
And I don't think that the property owner wants it to be technically long-term, I mean, I think three years, but, you know, I think that he has other things that he could do with the building, but he's, you know, a great community supporter and is happy for us to be there if we wanna be there.
You got plenty of parking, you got plenty of parking there, Chief, for squad cars and whatnot.
We do.
Kim, will you get us that budget?
Yes. Yeah, so what it is right now through the end of the fiscal year would be 90, 94,000 and some change, but Chief can send that, send that to y'all.
That's rent and all the items that would be needed?
This is desk chairs, copiers, computers, building walls on there, I believe, security cameras, security cameras.
Okay.
Tables.
Yeah. Okay, good.
The other thing to take into consideration, that's the initial cost. Following year won't be quite that high.
You're gonna have to buy the.
As far as, you just have to maintain the bill.
Sure, sure.
And the main, the maintenance on the bill should be through the lease.
Right.
You know.
Well, it'll probably be close to that each year, 'cause you have to have a four-years worth of rent.
Yeah.
But, but if that's, I mean, if that includes the remaining fiscal year, plus any upstart and new equipment and that kinda thing, that's a little less than I would've expected, but, I mean, 94,000 is not nothing. I mean, it's a lot of, lot of money, but it's just something that we have discussed in, as far as a need for some time now, so this seems like a, at least a reasonable alternative for us to go through with, at least for the short term.
I have a solution to that. I would like to see everybody that almost runs over me every day in this town, be stroked the maximum fine, and I'd be perfectly happy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, guys, counsel, committee updates. Anybody got any?
They're all coming up next week, or this week, and next week.
Jimmy?
No update.
Me neither.
Let me, let me say, I mean, just for the record, 'cause I missed the last one, you know, the Airport Authority did win a $2 million grant, an FAA grant, to assist with construction of a terminal building on the east side of the airport. So, everybody that's watching when I say the word terminal, we're not bringing Southwest Airlines to Fairhope, okay? Just, you know, it's a place for small private planes, pilots to gather and make their flight plans and whatnot, so we're not bringing passenger service here when I say terminal.
Thank you for that clarification, but that's great.
Yeah.
All right. Department head updates, please come forward and go ahead and knock out any agenda items you've got while you're up here. Don't be shy. Kim, anything? Oh, Hunter? Come on, Hunter, no, no, no.
I do wanna.
Eager, let's go.
Make sure we got through the work session, but Paige and I were talking before the meeting, and it, one thing that we, she didn't get a chance to talk about was something that Councilman Martin asked last, we discussed, last time we discussed, historic preservation. And all of those options, after a commission is formed, you know, creating districts landmarks, another one was a conservation district that can simply be about demolition and stopping demolition of certain things and setting thresholds.
Who decides what's demolition, what's not?
So, that's what I would, specifically, I think you set thresholds, but.
Ultimately, if, because if it's historic-related, it would be the Historic Preservation Commission. However, the parameters in place would be, again, public process, that could involve, you know, more than just Historic Preservation Commission, involve planning, building, you know, permits, who all does that, to kinda give an idea of setting, like, the guidelines in place, essentially. That would then have to be adopted.
By, by council, so you can kinda control those parameters, but again, that.
You're not involved in that, too, of course.
Yeah. And then 50% of the folks within the district that that applies would have to agree to that as well. So, there would have to be some buy-in from the public that live, that are, that we're imposing those regulations on.
Okay.
They're not really imposing, per se, if they're clinging to it, they see the benefit of that. That's their.
I'll let her speak, sell this from there on out.
They don't restrict the parameters.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
Better, better sales.
Imposition, benefit, it just depends on who is receiving the benefit or the imposition.
Yes, and I have a very quick zoning warrants that really, really don't need to talk about. We can handle that one in about two minutes.
Okay, I like the sound of it. Eric?
I'm gonna be real quick, and Richard's involved in this one, too. Item number 11 is plotter for the Public Works Building. When planning relocated, I don't think we were aware that they were actually paying for that plotter, so it went with them, and right now, we do not have a plotter for the Public Works Building. So, we would like, and I know I use it, Richard uses it, Steve C. uses it, so it's one of the most affordable ones we could find, so it would, it would help us out.
Eric, is that a budgeted item?
Uh, no, sir. Well, did we, I did not put it in my budget, I'm not gonna promise somebody else didn't capture it in theirs?
It had to be a no.
No, that's not, it's, can be covered under the lease, per, leased items, but it's about $1,900 over.
Okay.
We'll take that budget item, about $1,900 over.
Okay.
$324 a month.
Okay. All right.
We only get up once.
Oh, he's happy about something, he's smiling about.
No.
No.
Happy to be here, how about that?
We're happy to have you.
And happy to be in Fairhope. Is that fair?
That is very fair, absolutely.
And happy to be in front of y'all, I appreciate y'all. I have one, we have one item on the agenda, but before the, I wanna get to that, I guess a little prerequisite to that. We had a historical milestone, which we're not proud of, but end of February, the first day of March, we exceeded 6.7 million gallons a day on water. This hasn't happened that we look back on in Fairhope. So, typically, that's May-June timeline, but we met it just a few days ago. So, I know it was dry, but this is another on the growth that we're seeing, and this is not, you know, looking good for the summer, but we do have, moving forward, we have projects in hand. But that's another reason that you see on our, on Agenda Number Seven, we're asking for consideration in a study with the engineer to look at, and you should have the scope of work in front of you, so that would be looking at expanding Treatment Plant One, changing our chemical feed there to a safer, which we're using chlorine gas at most all, at all of our facilities right now. Treatment Plant Three will not be chlorine gas, it'll be sodium hypochlorite, which bleeds. It's a liquid, it's, it's a safer containment, you don't have to worry about the gas. We're also going to a liquid lime feed instead of the hydrated lime, which is, again, a more reliable feed. It would be the same thing, looking at Treatment Plant One and adding a fourth well there. We have three wells there currently, two in the shallow sand and one in the deeper sand. We would, this would also entail that and get with our geologists to look at adding a well to that sand. Also, the, we have a short, I guess you'd say a short circuit, or a bottleneck, leaving that plant, so that plant cannot do what it's capable of doing now. Would also be adding a 12-inch water line to go over to 13 and tie it to 16, which would give us more water to the north. Also, looking at Treatment Plant Four, if you remember, that's where we had our one and only PFAS hit, and we've got a test well there now. We'd like to test the water at the deeper aquifer to see if we have a hit on PFAS. If we do not, then we would entertain drilling a deeper well there and removing the shallow And also, the feasibility of adding another well out of Treatment Plant Three. That probably wouldn't be on property owned by the city currently, because we're having to move further out, but it would be there within that area, so that treatment plant would still treat the water. With a not-to-exceed of $32,000 for all the preliminary engineering that we just mentioned.
All right, counsel, any questions on this, pretty, not so great news?
Well, I think it is in a way, because you look at what we're doing now to increase the water out at Three, the 24, adding the well, the test well that we did, did have, proved to be a little high in manganese and iron, but we've got some ways that we, we're gonna be able to utilize that water, so we're still gonna be able to utilize the test well with submersible pump, which would give us another 500 gallons a minute. And all those are ongoing. Anytime you all would have an opportunity to ride out there, I'd love to carry out there and see, the work's going very well, and we've got the clear wells poured, so it's moving really at schedule, considering the supply chain issues. The 24, we should have pipe now, they put us off a month, we should have pipe by the end of May, first of June, so that project should be started by August. And we've talked to the contractor, which is him feel, and they're gonna run at least two crews, maybe three, so they're, they understand the priorities, so it should go fairly quick, so we're hoping the construction would be well under a year. So, there is some good to what I'm seeing, too.
So, bad, bad news that we hit such a high capacity so early in the year, good news is that we're, we've got a plan in place to be able to handle it once we get through with what we're trying to work on.
Yes, sir.
That sounds good.
We're good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, I can discuss item number eight. This is a grant that we were awarded. It's a pass-through, meaning as soon as we make this purchase, then we submit the receipts and get 100% reimbursement for these additional barricades, and this is, pretty much guarantee us that next year there'll be no cables during parade, so we're excited to get to this point. Also, item number nine, which I gave you kind of a hint of at our last meeting during the work session, this is the award, the contract for asbestos abatement at the Fairhope K-1 Center to Hernandez Demolition and Remediation, with a total proposal not to exceed $64,028.40. I do want to clarify, Southern Earth Sciences are remediation specialists that we were hired to do this. They did a complete survey and calculated the, the square footage of the mastic and tiles, as well as the linear footage of the pipe insulation that has to be removed and remediated. So, that's the base bid that you see of $53,000, but we also had every respondent give us a schedule of values for the unit, because basically, we have to remediate 100% of the asbestos. We're hopefully that we have captured every bit of it in the base bid, but we have asked for a 20% contingency, so that if it turns out to be four more square feet of tile than what they had calculated in their, in their survey, we're able to authorize and move forward without coming back for a change order. So, we're hoping that the bill on this is just $53,000 and some change, but we did ask to have a not-to-exceed with a 20% contingency in there. Also, I've got the ongoing saga of lawnmower. Also, I've got the ongoing saga of lawnmowers, and that is item number 12. As you know, a while back, we came to you that the Toro Corporation did have a four-wheel-drive diesel 72 out front mower available, and y'all authorized us to purchase that and leave the two John Deeres on the purchase order, which we know we're not going to come in this budget year. Pate Equipment Company called us and says we have another lawnmower that is, that is available, that is unassigned, if we're interested, and we're asking to go ahead and procure this as well. That gives us two lawnmowers this mowing season and keep the two John Deeres out there in the purchase order in case they ever decide to start producing them again, and account for it in next year's budget. So you do see that it's 100% over budget, but we have not spent the equivalent money on the two John Deeres this year that, that there's a purchase order out for, and we will not spend it this year. It'll just roll over and, and we'll settle up next year on that. And then finally, my favorite budget, counsel item, is we have a request to authorize surplus, and there's a couple of big-ticket items on there. We have a bulldozer as well as a 420 backhoe, and those two items should bring big, big dollars for us, so it's always nice to take a current asset and turn it into, or liability turned into an asset for you. And there is a request in there to authorize the, basically, gifting of a greenhouse frame to the City of Gulf Shores that we have deemed surplus, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Richard on any of these items?
Thank you very much.
Kim?
For item number six on grants, that's going to be the restore that we were able to receive, additional $3.5 million added to that sewer project. So if you have any questions on that.
Okay, anybody have any questions about us getting an additional $3.2 million?
Do you have any questions on number 10? We discussed that in work session last time, and so this will be to award, or to authorize Mayor to sign a contract for them to do a utility rate study.
Anybody have any questions on item number 10 for Kim or Mayor at this point?
Do you remember what that cost last time, Kim?
Yeah, it was, it was just a little less, and I don't remember the exact, but it was, yeah, it was just a little less, it wasn't much.
A little inflation about, how much?
3%.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Good afternoon. Quick update on the gas department. Wes just finished our annual report. It's our FMSO annual report due every March 18th, and just kind of wanted to hit some of the highlights, some of the stuff that, this only report, it doesn't all pertain to the gas department, most of it does, but stuff like line locate tickets that come, that come through the 811 portal. We just finished it, so I got it on my phone, we don't have it printed out. We have now 588 miles of gas main and roughly 16,156 services. The excavation damages for last year were 80 excavation damages, and there was 22,549 811 line locate tickets that came through the City of Fairhope. So that's, the line locators, so from whether we call our own in or contractors calling them in, it was 22,549 tickets that the utilities had to go out and locate, I'm going to take care of. So huge number, I think we had 18,000 last year, so we had four more thousand tickets come in this past year than we did last year. Yeah, and we have three line locators, maybe four, you know, two for the, two for the gas department, one for the electric, and then one or two for Jason. So those are, you know, some of those may be outside of electrical areas, but gas and water still has to locate them. But there was 22,549 811 line locate tickets.
Like 60 or 70 a day?
It's a lot, you know, you know, and some of them, you know, we have, you know, we don't have gas in certain parts of Daphne, right? So some of them we can clear fairly quickly, but those are limited, right, on some of those. So they have a geographical area of all the utilities, and so that's how they notify each one of us. So just kind of some of the highlights on our annual report that we have to turn into the federal government every year. But as far as projects, we just finished up Phase Two of North Hills, and the big accomplishment this last week was Walmart. Walmart's installed a huge 1,000 KW generator, so we had to upgrade a regulator station, run a new meter for that, and then upgrade Walmart's meter as well. But a pretty impressive amount of line locate tickets that are coming through right now that we're having to handle, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You guys caught up? You know, there was a time when y'all were running a little behind on getting some gas ran to generators and things like that.
And Eric mentioned it a while ago, the commercial stuff has been crazy here lately. It's been, you know, a lot of commercial, you know, the Beef O'Brady's and Spanish Ford, obviously our area's a little larger, but the commercial stuff has been, been overwhelming at times here lately, but, yeah, we've definitely caught up, we're back to running, you know, people that want gas, trying to get them gas as fast as we can between now, all these commercials. The new constructions seem to slow down a tiny bit on services, but then it's like ballooning on the commercial stuff.
So the person that lives in town that decides to buy a generator, y'all get to them pretty quick?
Depending on how fast they can get their generator and plumbing done in a timely manner. But not six, seven months, yes, more timely than we were this time last year. Way more timely, so. Anything else? Thank you.
I don't have anything on the agenda, but I just wanted to express my gratitude towards the countless amount of people that worked for this city, that came to our aid and helped us get that park ready for opening day. I thought it was a fantastic day, just to see the excitement on the kids' faces out there. I thought it was a great day. I want to thank the Mayor for her leadership and her support of making sure that people were out there and helping us, and it, it really made me feel good to be part of a complete team effort, because everybody bought in and everybody was out there helping until late hours of the night. We're truly appreciative of all the help that we got.
Heard a lot of compliments about the new fields.
We're proud of them.
It wasn't just excitement on kids' face either, I was pretty excited about it myself, so it was, it was great. It really was, the whole, the day was awesome, the fields were awesome, I mean, it was, it was great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else? All right, we will end the work session, and we'll be back to start at 6 o'clock.